This is the meeting.
This is the meeting.
This is the meeting.
Okay, we have the committee appointments. Number fourteen and that's Weed Inspector, EDA, Utilities and Parks at Gregham. And HRE Board Appointments are needed, two board members resigned. And then number fifteen is the LMCIT Liability Coverage Waiver Form. Any other additions? If not, I need a motion to accept the agenda with those two.
So much.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is made by Jenny, seconded by Josh, to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Since we have nothing under five, six, seven, or eight, we go with consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or any additions or concerns about that? Okay, if not, I need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
A second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion is made by Josh, seconded by Rick, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. With that, we're going to move on to the Golf Course Board, a little presentation from Tom Otto. Please. Update that I can provide, one of the things that I know there's different questions, and as we're meeting, you know, with Ralph who's on the committee, as far as the Golf Course Committee, I can give you an update, I think that's appropriate for all of the different parts of the action that has happened so far. One of the things as far as, you know, an update as far as the dollar amount where we're at now. So we have over thirty-one thousand dollars in cash that have been received. We have another eighteen thousand dollars in donation pledges that also, once we get resolution as far as the DNR, we expect those to come in. And then we have twenty thousand dollars worth of pledge grants for equipment or once we get a viable agreement signed. New donations as far as our last meeting, I believe, and I don't exactly recall, I think we were like twelve or fourteen thousand in our last meeting, so now we're over thirty-one thousand, and that's what our meeting was last week. What have we as far as purchased or leased so far? There was a nice used Toro Fairway mower that one of the people had offered to the committee or to the Golf Course Committee at a significantly reduced price, and that was a thirty-five hundred dollar purchase, and of which fifteen hundred was the initial payment, followed by two one thousand dollar payments that are going to be spread out throughout the summer. After that, there was some miscellaneous tees and gloves and the equipment that the state park had, that they were offering today as we were corresponding, for forty-nine dollars, and so we were going to go ahead and buy that merchandise that, you know, the state park had, that they had no need for. So that's the money that we've spent so far. We have rented, for instance, when we were out as far as maintaining the equipment, we've rented, you know, a tractor and a mower, as we've had approximately ten people out there. One of the people actually had zero-turn mowers, and he offered two of those just for free for us to use this past Saturday. Another participant offered that mower to use to mow, so we had six of us last week mowing. I got a nice suntan for ten hours' worth of zero-turn mowing, so before I started, I hadn't been on a zero-turn, and by the time I was done, I was very proficient on the zero-turn, and also very sunburned. So anyhow, so we got the whole course mowed, except for three greens, because that didn't get mowed, but we, those had been mowed about two weeks earlier, because there was three of them that I mowed. So anyway, the whole course has been mowed, so we literally have had a chance to see what kind of shape it's in. It's in very good shape. I noticed maybe a couple very small spots on a green or tee box that was a little sheltered that might have a little bit of dead grass, but overall, the greens are in great shape, fairways are in great shape, and the roughs in great shape. So it's all been mowed at least twice. So that's, that's very encouraging as far where we're at. Areas as far as the volunteer hours, so there's approximately ten of us, and let's just say, you know, we've put in maybe eight to ten hours for all of us, so let's say ten, we're a hundred hours or more as far as this volunteer time. But every time we go out and ask for volunteers or equipment, like the zero-turn that I was riding, that was just donated. It said, "Go ahead and use it for all day," so that's very encouraging. Different things, people are doing.
We, we, one of our members did set up a spreadsheet to track hours and miles driven so that we can use those as in-kind when we go to write grants. So those are being tracked by, by all the board members and any other volunteers we've had show up, I've shared those, that spreadsheet.
So that's helpful for us, the log in, and then we've got records on it. So, over a hundred hours volunteer, and we continue to have people that are willing to volunteer, not only just, you know, a few of us that are here tonight, but many others that are willing to come out and just help us mow, help us clean up sticks or branches, and so that makes, that makes the amount of costs involved in getting ready to go pretty minimal. The DNR, we're, we got some correspondence back and, back and forth as far as the agreement, and we're awfully close on it. There's, there's five things that they've listed that they would like some additional clarification. They would like just a detailed list of concession offerings, so we already had said prepared frozen type foods and different pops, and for instance, so we'll get a more detailed list for them, which is, we have that. List of the chemicals we're going to use, so Mark is familiar with chemicals we're going to use, so we have that list, so we'll get back to them that. We are looking at the chalet, if we're going to do some air conditioning there. There's been discussion where we would get a local air-conditioned contractor to just give a bid and some specs if we had air-conditioned that. But also within the committee, we also realize, because I have one that I'm going to donate to the group, I have an air conditioning unit that actually is movable, and it has a dryer hose, if you're familiar with that, that goes into a window. My daughter, when she was going to college, used it, it's a very nice unit. So we've had two people that said they have those type units to be able to air-condition the chalet the first year. Because as we continue to progress, you know, in the timing on it, you know, one of the things is, is, okay, when do we actually get an agreement so we can open up? And so you want to protect yourself with some of your capital outlays. So I'll address that a little bit. Merchandise list, gloves, tees, t-shirts, hats, you know, that type stuff is what they're asking, so that's fairly straightforward for us to be able to provide that list. And then finally, a picture of the tee box signs. We did provide when we were meeting with the DNR, as far as sponsorship signs, just a nice, clean, succinct, very plain sponsorship sign, which is going to be a five-hundred-dollar type sponsorship that we're looking once we're open. And our tee box signs are going to be almost the same thing, so one of our members on the committee, Bernadette, she had pictures of that that she was forwarding, so those are the five things that the DNR were asking as far as a little additional detail. So that's, everything else is common ground, it has been fairly well worked out. There's a couple things where they're asking as far as special events, where we have to send in special events, and so we wanted some detail as far as, what's a special event? Is a special event fifty people, you know, or a tournament? Or is a special event twenty people that just might come out for a golf outing? Instead of a special event, we're asking for, you know, some of the detail, what is, what is a special event if they can give us a little more? We'd like to think that you don't need to ask for permission if you're going to have a group of twenty people just kind of come out and play golf. So that's a little bit of the detail, but other than that, you know, we have, we have the initial, I printed it off this afternoon, we have the initial draft, and so we're really quite close. I went through the areas of resolution, final agreement. I would think, just because of the fact that it was a little easier when we were going into St. Paul with our group and sitting down with them, I would think the correspondence back and forth via electronic email, that we're probably looking at maybe two weeks. So I would think within two weeks, we should be awfully close, and it might, might be sooner, but let's just say two weeks. And then, once we would get that actually agreement between the two parties, obviously we would need you to review it, spend some time, and we can all discuss it together, because we'd need obviously the city to review it and approve it. As far as the equipment and some of the things, we're looking at equipment, one of the things when we were out looking at fundraising, we were looking initially at buying the golf carts and buying the four pieces of mowing equipment, and that was fifteen golf carts and four pieces of mowing equipment, and that was a significant capital outlay, it was like sixty-five to seventy thousand dollars. Couple things as we progress, as, you know, we're kind of starting to get into the season and opening it up, one of the keys is, we pursued and have bids as far as being able to lease. You know, John Deere, Toro have given us leasing equipment bids that are quite appealing as far as cash, cash flow, so consequently, we're thinking, maybe the right thing to do instead of going out and putting that cash out as far as an outlay, that you start out by leasing. One of them, there's three different leases, you can lease for three years, for instance, you can lease for a shorter amount of time, and then have a buyout at the end or not have a buyout at the end. And, and when we're so new and early on going at it, we're thinking, you know, we should take a look at one of the good equipment, because the John Deere was very appealing, so we're looking at four mowers and then a gator, because we'd like a gator that'll allow, that we'd lease as a combination of units, and that would provide something that we spray with, something that we can, you know, haul maybe chemicals with, and you can haul, you know, other things, dirt or whatever you need around the golf course. And so it's just one of the pieces of equipment that we would like to have. In addition, there's a couple other pieces of equipment, like it might be a tractor with a power takeoff or things like that, that's part of, you know, some of the equipment pledges that have been out there, that we would like to look at using. So with that, you know, that keeps our cash outlay significantly lower. The golf carts, we also have pursued as far as leasing the golf carts, and one of the things is, they're doing what they call a shipper study, and they're doing that, that a questionnaire, how many carts are we anticipating as far as per day on the weekend and stuff, so that they can evaluate what kind of traffic you're looking at. I personally, because when I play there, I, I like to walk it, and so, you know, we have, we're thinking there's going to be forty percent of the people that'll play and walk it, and there'll probably be sixty percent of the people that actually ride a cart. And so that gives them an idea just what kind of an impact so we can get carts approved. If we can actually get the agreement and stuff, we would like to move forward as far as opening up the chalet and getting play going, because then you can start to sell memberships, you can start to sell sponsorships, and you can address some of the larger businesses in the area, because now you have an agreement, you're going to be, you're going to be open. We've already addressed shells, Bernadette and I went and talked to shells, and they're quite interested as far as being the vendor that'll help support us there through their distributor, so we'll continue to pursue that. And then we have a food license that we have to do. We've received good news, there's not a whole lot of changes we have to do to the chalet because of what we're doing with just frozen pizzas and things like that and ice machines, so we'll pursue that end of it, whereas to get our food license, you don't have to change the, you know, the paneling and the linoleum and stuff, they're saying no, that, that looks, we probably need a three-compartment sink, things like that, so we're familiar with, you know, used restaurant equipment, places where you can go to get that so you can keep your costs down. But that's some of the things that, you know, we would actually get a little bit more of the detail once we actually have the agreement signed. So, you know, we, we're getting close to the agreement, but you have to make sure, is the course in good shape? It is. Has it been mowed? It has been mowed twice. So those are the type things, you know, when you're out there mowing, like myself on Saturday, you're almost, after you're done mowing, you'd like to, you know, bring your bag of clubs with and, you know, let's play, let's go. But, you know, we'd like to get the tees or the holes and the flags and stuff from the state, and so that just helps really speed up just the whole process of being able to open it up. One of the things that I see is, we've gotten so much favorable publicity on what we're doing, and there's been two or three people that have said, you know, as soon as you're open, we just can't wait to go out and see what's there, whether or not you have a golf cart or not. If we don't have it, we'd like to think we do, but if we don't, people are going to come. People are going to come, they want to come see, what do we have, what's going on, et cetera. So where we're at right now with the pledges and the cash, and the cash still that we feel is going to come in, we're about seventy thousand dollars. You know, we had talked about additional dollars, but that was, like I said earlier, sixty, sixty-five thousand dollars to buy that equipment. We would like to start out, and let's just go the first year, let's just see how it goes, let's go the second year, and you can lease it before, you know, you say, all right. It is sticking to our business plan as far as, you know, we've identified what we need as far as the lease will pay to the state of Minnesota, the DNR for the chalet and the garage and building that they'll allow us to put our equipment on, et cetera. Mark has done some work as far as fuel storage, and we have a landowner out there that's willing to work with us for fuel storage, which is big, because the DNR wasn't interested in us having fuel storage on their property, and so we've been able to find our own. So we have, we have those, those things going, but once again, you just kind of need, you know, the agreement that's, that we've got, that we've got a deal going here, and then it's a whole lot easier to kind of move with a little bit more definition. And so, that's, that's kind of, one of the questions is, you know, what is the right number? Our budget shows a favorable number at the end of the first year, and that's with buying the equipment and raising a certain amount of money. Well, we've raised, you know, at least three-fourths of the money so far that we thought that we needed, but now the key is, is we all know, what kind of play are we going to get, what kind of people are going to come out and look? And I think the lease, to me personally, I'm familiar with leases and capital outlays through what I've done for many years in, in my life, is starting out with a lease and the whole crew, we have two CPAs, feel that's the right way to go also. And it, it just feels like the right way. If we're able to be open by Memorial Day and playing, that would be, that'd be a good, a good target. If not, we'd be shortly thereafter, but it would sure be nice for Memorial Day that weekend to be able to be out there playing. We'd like to finalize, the Golf Course Committee will meet again tomorrow night, and we'd like to kind of finalize as far as the mowers and getting that, because, you know, we're kind of mowing the whole course to about four inches, you know, three to four inches, that's kind of a rough height. The zero-turn I was on could actually turn it on down, so you could actually mow the fairways to a fairway height, and so really what we'd like to do, and we're push mowing, you know, the tee boxes and the green, which as, as I've done, I have a step app, and if you mow three greens with the step app, I had, that's five miles. And so I was saying, that's like pushing a twenty-inch mower from Gibbon to Winthrop. And so obviously, the equipment we're going to lease are not going to be push mowers, they're going to be riders. So that's, that's a key, because that will quickly get the course in the shape, and then obviously what we'll do is, we have to fire up the sprinkler system and stuff to make sure that, you know, part of that, we get the computer. Some of the donations have been, you know, just different things that they've committed, it may not have been cash, but they're either committing a mower they'll give us, like a zero-turn, things like that, which really, really helps. You know, a lot of people can't, can't turn around and say, well gee, I'm going to give you three thousand dollars worth of cash, but I can give you a two thousand or three thousand dollar zero-turn mower, and, or a trailer, or an air conditioner, or things like that. And then that's, you know, the, the joy of what we're doing here, because you get so many people that are going to help however they can. And so, that pretty much, I think, gets you up to speed. Trying to get the DNR agreement, you know, just finalize this twenty-one-page draft I have, it's awfully close. And I think after that, the course is in good shape, and now it's just, you know, tidying up the rest of it so we get access to it. So I tried to, I think, cover all the aspects that we've all been working on, you know, you have any additional questions?
I have some questions, Mr. Otto. First, first I want to thank you and all the people who've been volunteering out there to, you know, to at least make this a possibility. Because while we work on getting the agreement with the DNR, there's work that had to be done, and I want to thank the council for approving that maintenance agreement.
I agree.
So that we could get to that point. You know, the idea here is to give, give this group the chance to make this work, and I think that all parties have been moving that direction, and that's a very, very good thing. I'm very, very proud of that. You, you answered a lot of the questions that I kind of had in my mind before I came in tonight. I would like to, to go over a couple of questions that I still have, some of them regard to staffing.
Yes.
And where are we staffing-wise? What's been posted? What have we received? How does that, what's the next step there in your mind?
And we have posted for, you know, a person that manages the chalet, and I know that there, we have an interested people that have applied for that. One in particular I know is, is known by one of our committee members, but they have to actually, you know, fill out and apply through the city as far as just that vetting and qualification stage. Mowers, once again, we're looking to see, I think we've had three or four people that have responded to that, so what we'd like to do is to see, how many hours are these people interested in working? Because we have a real good idea, especially from Mark's experience, a real good idea, how many hours does it take to mow the greens, to mow the fairways, to mow the roughs, and to be able to mow the tee boxes? So what we'll do is, as far as what we, while we go through the applicants and look at that and do some interviewing and see just how much time do they have? They have twenty hours, they have thirty hours? And then part of it is what we're doing initially, if there's some gaps out there, it's no different than, you know, I'm pretty, I'm proficient now as far as being able to help and step in and do things like rough mowing or any of the mowing really. You know, all of us are pretty proficient when it comes to mowers. So that's where we're at there. One of the keys is, is what we feel the chalet, and then the other thing is having a person that is kind of an overseer on it, where we need the person that's got the license to supply chemicals and that type thing. So we're quite fortunate as far as one of the people, you know, on the committee and who's here tonight is Mark, he carries the license, he carries the knowledge of what chemicals are needed, and also the knowledge that is needed as far as to oversee and manage that course, so. We'll kind of rely, once again, on the skill level that we have amongst our group, along I mentioned, we have two CPAs that have been extremely helpful, really, as far as managing as far as our budgets and adjusting, as far as now we're seven months instead of, you know, our regular eight or nine months, and, and so we've adjusted, you know, some of our revenues, we've adjusted some of our expenses. So, you know, that type of expertise is really quite helpful when you're trying to manage and run a budget, so.
And so when we look at the original number of a hundred thousand dollars, I mean, the original statement was, you know, if we don't raise a hundred thousand dollars, we probably shouldn't do this, and, and you've kind of addressed that we have a significant amount of that money raised, but perhaps that hundred thousand dollars isn't the needed number when you look at leases instead of purchases?
Yeah.
And kind of have adjusted that down.
And the, the approximately for the mowing, maintenance equipment is about twelve-five. That's a three-year lease, will be a three-year commitment, that's five pieces of equipment. The carts, approximately nine thousand per fifteen carts, so we're committing roughly twenty-one thousand per year for three years, so that as opposed to probably forty to fifty thousand a purchase upfront, which, and I would say too that we're probably have no intention of stopping at a hundred thousand. We've reached this level, we're basically getting it mostly from the individuals, along as we continue our campaign, once the East Greenland is signed to the larger entities, the granting organizations, and the foundations, we would hope maybe to, maybe come closer to a hundred and four, a hundred and fifty thousand, which will give us the ability to buy, a piece of equipment has become available, we'll find deals, so at the end of three years, we will have our equipment bought and have used money from donations rather than our revenue stream, which would be big salaries, utilities, all overhead.
So one of the things, as Mark is saying too, we have fifteen carts in our budget, we've also talked as a committee, you know, maybe you start with twelve, and, and you see what kind of play, you know, just, do you need fifteen, do you need twelve, do you need thirteen? You know, part of this is a little bit of a learning curve, we, but we've gotten a whole lot of interest, you know, our pledges are really from numerous places, quite a ways from here, but there's a lot of people interested from the New Ulm areas to, you go north up to Hector, you just, that park really draws from quite, quite a region, and I'd be real, I'll be real interested to see when those players come, you know, are they going to walk, do they want to be on the cart? How do you want to do it? Because, you know, if anyone hasn't been out there, and the people that have, the setting is, is pretty beautiful. So consequently, we feel, one of the things going in, we're going to keep our, our cart fees and our green fees quite reasonable, so that it's attractive for people to come out and play it and use it, for families to come out and play it and use it, which is like a lot of the history out there, people kept saying, you know, when I grew up, I played out there with my mom and dad, we played out. So we're trying to keep it very reasonable so people not only will come out that first time experienced there, they'll want to go back, they want to come back, and, and that's really, along with the actual historical center that's out there, we think it's, it's quite attractive. And so we have a lot of the data, a lot of the campers that were saying they were golfers, so, you know, once you've got that nice golf experience back, you're going to get the campers back, you're going to get people visiting the historical site, and, you know, that's going to be people that are going to be coming into town and, and throughout the area, so, you know, it's pretty, it's pretty exciting, especially on the fact that the course is in good shape. You know, that's the first thing we're all scared, we get a lot of winter kill, do we have a lot of dead grass out there, and we virtually have none.
More of a question for the council members and for you, I guess, is, when you think of this, council members, what information do you need more clarification on from the golf board in regard to this project when we, you know, because it's kind of hard for me, because I've been to a lot of these meetings, so I don't, you know, I, there's some things I know that you probably don't know. So what is it you want to know that you don't know, that we need this, this group to report back to you to make the informed decision that we need to make? Do they want to be on the cart? How do you want to do it? Because, you know, if anyone hasn't been out there, and the people that have, the setting is pretty beautiful. So consequently, we feel, one of the things going in, we're going to keep our cart fees and our green cheese quite reasonable, so that it's attractive for people to come out and play it and use it, for families to come out and play it and use it, which is like a lot of the history out there, people kept saying, you know, when I grew up, I played out there with my mom and dad, we played out. So we're trying to keep it very reasonable, so people not only will come out, that first time experience there, they'll want to go back, they want to come back. And that's really, along with the actual historical center that's out there, we think it's quite attractive. And so we have a lot of the data, a lot of the campers, they were saying they were golfers. So, you know, once you've got that nice golf experience back, you're going to get the campers back, you're going to get people visiting the historical site, and, you know, that's going to be people that are going to be coming into town and throughout the area. So, you know, it's pretty exciting, especially on the fact that the course is in good shape. You know, that's the first thing we're all scared. Do we get a lot of winter kill? Do we have a lot of dead grass out there? And we virtually have none.
More of a question for the council members, and for you, I guess, is, when you think of this, council members, what information do you need more clarification on from the golf board in regard to this project when we, you know, because it's kind of hard for me, because I've been to a lot of these meetings, so I don't, you know, I, there's some things I know that you probably don't know. So what is it you want to know that you don't know, that we need this group to report back to you to make the informed decision that we need to make?
Anybody? Questions?
I guess, the biggest thing is, excuse me, I want to know for sure that payrolls, that you have enough money that's going to cover payroll for the entire summer? As I mean, I imagine you're looking at $2,000 a week just to keep place staffed and mowed. I want to make sure there's enough money there to cover-
Exactly right.
...payroll for the summer.
That's one of the things, as far as, let's get open, when we've got just a lot of attention in the area, so people can come and experience it. And I really think that's the one reason that it was closed, is because not enough people knew about it. And, but we're going to add the amenities as far as golf clubs, our golf carts, and then also, you know, one of the legislative bills that's going through is to allow the alcohol to be there. And those, we feel are key areas, golf carts, and be able to have alcohol out there. We think that early it makes for a better experience for the people that choose that, but we're going to have the pops and things for families, and it's just, we agree 100%. You know, you just don't know until people start showing up. You sell sponsorships, the holds, you start selling memberships, punch cards. I know just in the business I'm in, we're interested in the sponsorship of a hold, we're interested in punch cards for employees and stuff, so that they can go out and utilize it. So that's kind of the thing, you know, it's one of those things where you want to support, you want to support the local area attractions, so that, you know, people use them and that aren't familiar with them. So that's, we're interested in the same thing. You really need to get going, so you start generating the cash flow, which is really why we wanted to start out by leasing, so we have the cash reserves there to be able to handle, you know, your fixed costs, and those are things, you know, like your weekly wages. So, exactly right.
Yes, I have a question as far as marketing. Do you have kind of a plan for marketing? Because we've been talking about how important that is, and you said that, you know, a lot of people didn't know about it, that's why they didn't come.
And we have, you know, through Jim Wenzel, who's helped with us, you know, Jim, for instance, will still utilize, you know, a ton of his ideas and get on Facebook, and just get out through more of the social media. You know, I'm not a real savage social media person, but I know we'll get those people that'll help us in that arena. And then also, you know, once again, once we open up, I think we'll get the local media that will help promote us. And so that's always the plan, is let's be aggressive in that area. You know, we have advertising in our budget, and early on, we spent advertising dollars to help get pledges out and stuff, so we feel we've really had a fairly good success in that arena. But obviously, you know, you continue, you know, to pursue that.
Anything else? Anybody? Any more questions?
No, I want to say too, thank you very much for all the work that you have put in, all the volunteers, it's great.
Yeah, you're welcome, thank you.
We lost more opportunities.
Yes. Well, you have that list from when we had that meeting down at the-
Yes, we do.
Yeah. We developed the list of volunteer opportunities, and we will be sharing with the public once we, once we have an agreement in place.
Good, thank you.
Okay, then we'll move on to number 11, Dottie Snowbrick. You would like to speak to us about some concerns about the response from the attorney on the golf course.
Correct. First of all, I want to say I'm not against friends of Fort Ridgely or anything like that. It's concerns as far as me and a group of people that we have regarding taxpayer funds and any of that. So don't think I'm against them doing it, I think it's great they're doing it. My concern is where I live. So, to tell you I'm disappointed is an understatement. I'm not sure if there was a misunderstanding that the city attorney, Erin Walton, had regarding the questions that were to be answered about the EDA, or if someone misclarified the questions, or worse, purposely changed the questions. Because I didn't receive a copy of the answer until after the April 11th meeting, I was unable to speak on the response from the attorney. I am confused on how the council members that were present for the questions that were asked and statements that were made at the March 14th meeting, read the answer from the city attorney and went, yeah, that's the questions that were asked by the concerned residents of Fairfax. The questions were not, what can the EDA do with their funds on a normal basis, and can they enter into an equipment agreement? The questions were, are the EDA funds considered taxpayer funds, and can the EDA give funds based on the agreement with the DNR with the condition that it could not come at a cost to the residents of Fairfax? I am truly disappointed in the Fairfax City Council. After I left the April 11th meeting, I was even more upset to hear the taxpayer funds maybe being used to pay for things relating to Fort Ridgely. And because of this, I invite you to a challenge. My challenge to all of you is, if you issue a check, you sign a check, you receive funds, or approve the financial statements, at any point money is being used for Fort Ridgely, you pay back the city of Fairfax the amount paid relating to Fort Ridgely. If you were involved with the spending or receiving of the funds, you be the ones to pay it back. In turn, the city then would receive at least six times the money that was spent incorrectly. Because everyone involved will put the full amount back into the city funds. You want to be in charge of this, then make it part of the agreement to guarantee the residents of Fairfax that our funds are being spent correctly, and the people in charge are being vigilant and held accountable. If they are not, it is your money that corrects it, not our money as taxpayers. I'm challenging you to this, because after hearing a statement like, she is salary and it doesn't matter, it's truly disturbing when you find out that they receive comp time and vacation time. Really? If it doesn't matter because she is salary, then why do you offer comp time or vacation time? At my job, whether on salary or hourly, does not matter. If I am not at my job and gone, and it's not related to my job, I must use vacation time, personal time, or lose the pay. It seems that decisions are being made for the people you represent, but, or, sorry, are not being made for the people you represent, but by personal feelings, whether it is because they're friends of the employees, or it's because they're supporters of Fort Ridgely. You are representing all the residents of Fairfax, and your personal feelings should be left at the door, and decisions should be made to benefit Fairfax. I could care less if Fort Ridgely Golf Course is open or not, I care where the funds of Fairfax are going and why. My question to the council now is, who is the one reviewing all of these agreements that you are signing regarding Fort Ridgely? Is the city attorney and/or the League of Minnesota Cities? If not, who? Thank you for your time to hear my concerns.
Thank you, Dottie. Anybody have any comments?
Can I have a copy of that, Dottie?
Can I give you one?
Yeah, just anytime, it'd be fine.
Okay, yeah.
That'd be great.
I don't know where you're at, but I can drop one off at the city hall.
I'd probably like a copy too.
Or I can drop off one, you can make copies.
Yep.
That'd be great. There's no comments, we're going to move on to number 13, which is Fairfax Royalty Request. And I think, oh, I missed it, I missed the seal code, I'm sorry. We go to number 12, well, the seal code project cost estimates, which are $22,309.60, and the alternate is $3,611.20, giving it a total of $25,920.80. Any comments in regard to this? No comments? Okay, not, then I guess I need-
This is going in on with, just to let you know, we're going in on with City of Libya, to try and cut costs down a little bit. They offered us to go in with them, so. Waiting for an actual, this might not be the final number, it might be a little less yet, or just turned out for bids, so, just so you know.
We're just estimates, under estimates right now.
Okay, there's no other comments, I need a motion to accept it, please.
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Josh, seconded by Rick, to approve the cost estimate. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we'll move on to the Fairfax Royalty Request. We have it in front of you, and they're asking us to be a sponsor. They also have a picture of the medallion, which is 2016, but I'm sure it'll be 2017. Does anybody have any comments or questions in regard to that? I think we did it last year, maybe I'm going to be done every year. Yep. If everybody's in agreement, I need a motion to do that. So, do you have a second?
Second.
Motion by Jenny, seconded by Josh, to do the Fairfax Royalty Request. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Then we'll move on to committee appointments. We need a weed inspector, a member on the EDA, and utilities and parks.
That's what Greg Johnson volunteered for.
So I guess-
That's a different facet.
Okay, yeah, I will do it. But we need to have a motion for that.
I'd make a motion, but Mayor Gillis assumes responsibility.
Oh, thank you. I'll second that.
Okay, okay, motion by Rick, seconded by Jenny, that Mayor Gillis will be the weed inspector on the EDA, utilities board, and park board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Okay, motion's carried. But it's just a joke. I know, okay. Now, I did mention before the meeting started here that we had two members from the HRA Board resign, Leanne Frank and Barb Freyte, and so we need two board members.
And I said I would do that.
And Jenny said she would do it, and-
Do you guys all want to?
Yeah.
I'd rather be reading-
I think we need-
Actually, we only have two council members over there.
Okay, so we need to find someone else. Is there anyone in the audience? I'm looking at you.
What do you do?
You come to a meeting about twice a year.
What's it governing?
It's governing, it's the housing, Marsha, you could probably explain it better than me, it's of the two-part building.
It's the Hall of Independence Authority, they have the Fairview Apartments and Selfie Apartments under there, and then basically, if there's any ready-up grants, that would go under there too. But we don't take care of the small cities block grant right now, but if there would ever be.
Like recently, we just had a meeting and decided on window treatments, we're going to do down there. You're glad you're not on that one, right?
How long do these meetings usually last?
I would say we had one about a month ago, it's about an hour, and the last one we had is about 20 minutes.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay. Anyone else? Would ya? Okay, great.
Somebody raise their hand.
Yes! This is the most fantastic first time being back as mayor I've ever known. This is great. Okay. Okay, so then I need a motion to, we need a motion then, to accept them on the HRA Board.
I'll make a motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion was made by Rick and seconded by Josh, to, for our new appointed board members, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. Okay, then we're going to move on to the liability coverage waiver form, and Marsha, will you explain that to the board members, please?
Just something to add, when you're giving them some city assistance, our waiver form for insurance, whether you want to increase the tort limit, municipal tort limit, from 1.5 to 2 million. And actually, I think they've changed it now, and it's 2 million all the time, but-
I haven't looked at the statute since then, but every year they want to know if we want to waive our liability limit, and every year we say no.
Right.
Why would we?
I was going to say, why would you waive that?
It's kind of a silly thing, isn't it?
There are some communities out there that take it on.
So they take it on themselves, rather than-
No, I mean, they raise the amount.
They raise the amount.
Yeah.
We did for three years. Depends on what the council.
Okay, are there any more questions about that? Not any, a motion.
I'll make that motion, we do not waive the tort limits.
Okay, motion made by Jenny, do you have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, seconded by Rick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Moving on to staff reports, Marsha, you want to take over?
Building permits in April, Jeff and Lynette Charlemagne built our permit for fence, Cassie Craftney, a fence, Paul Dolmire, a garage, Jim Prox, demolition of a home, and Darwin Black, a deck, and Tom McFarlane, a porch. That was the building permits for April. In your packet, I believe I put in there the note from the engineer that the street project's start date is going to be delayed until after June 25th for the community celebration, because it's all, we're doing second-
Second half of Second Street.
Yeah. So it'll be right down there in Park, so they're going to delay it till after the celebration. Attended Heartland Corn Products and New Ulm PNC meeting, May 4th, and there was an offer put on the table by Heartland. The New Ulm is taken into consideration, and probably be another meeting. On a possibility for the following week to see if we can get that resolved. Got council emails set up, or I don't have them set up, but I have first initial, last name, and you did get it in your packet, each one's, and the domain will be at Fairfax-MN.gov. And there's a list of how you set it up, and if anybody needs any assistance with it, they'd be glad to help you out, you just have to let me know if you do this, so you're setting up the email account. But these are all under the city now. And there's also a password for you to get in there and, your original chat, your original password, and then you can change your password as soon as you get it set up. If anybody has any difficulty with that, you can just let me know, and I will not help you, but I'm not techy, so. But it's a pretty straightforward explanation of everything, so. Financial statements, if there's any questions, I still, I couldn't get out the electric one yet, electric fund, because I haven't gotten the invoices for the power supply this month. And that's it.
Hey, Joel.
We've been getting the pool ready the last few days here. They're probably going to come in the fall to do the coping edge and all the skimmers. They weren't going to be able to make it here in time to get it done before we open, because the open date's on 2/5th, I do believe, so. The tennis courts are going to get striped or get painted, they're actually started today, and they'll, he wasn't positive they'll have it done this week, otherwise it'd be early next week that they'd be here and finish it, so. There'll be a pickleball court down there also, with tennis courts, so. He said it wouldn't cost any extra, put a pickleball court on it. We hired Ryan Grunkie, he started today, was his first day, so it'll be a big help. And I have a question for you guys, in the memorial park, that entrance for the tar path kind of goes up to the pool right now, there's kind of a handicap access where you can go on a tar path. They're going to be removing that handicap access or that approach, and they're going to move it further down to the corner. Would you like to eliminate that blacktop path, it's pretty beat up the way it is, and just seat it in and be done with it? Or would you want to run a sidewalk along, all the way down Second Street? I don't know, it's up to you guys, but just an option for you guys.
I'd say we need one or the other, either the path or a sidewalk. I would think so, I'm not-
You know, it's either they do like a sidewalk even up to that path, but we'd have to redo that path, because it's pretty low, that blacktop path is pretty low shot. You know, then you wouldn't have to go all the way down to the corn on First Ave, from Second Ave to First Ave, you know, you'd have to run that whole north and south sidewalk.
Yeah, I'm not, are you familiar with what he's talking about? I'm not.
That old tar path and the baby pool.
You don't have to make a decision today, I just thought I'd run it by you, and you can-
Yeah, that would be cool, we'll look at it.
I think the corn engineer wanted to put the handicap ramp access on the corner where it's supposed to be, you come down to the-
Yep.
You come down to the, you come down the street, he must have put it on the corner over there, and then you have, you put it in, you have nowhere to go with it. So, he was saying he should maybe run a sidewalk all the way down and connect up with...
With the existing one in front of the pool.
If somebody is coming in a wheelchair or whatever, they wouldn't be using the street. Or they could come down this street, go down there and get there too, so. But I think he's putting that handicap.
Yes, and they're gonna put a partial sidewalk there, you know, just in the way, but it's kinda pointless.
I guess I'd like a picture of that, and then what the proposal is.
Let's just go look at it.
Yeah, I guess I don't understand it, I don't know what that is.
Other than that, so, oh, I was gonna ask you guys too, if you wanted, I know it was brought up previous years, if you wanted to do some parking striping uptown. So, vehicles actually park at a decent angle uptown, so you're not training, especially some of the people with longer trucks, and it gets kinda tight once in a while, but just a thought process. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
I have a question for you. Friday is our community cleanup day from the school. Do you have jobs for our kids to do? Are you expecting people to come to the park, or...
Or is that actually, who always took that over? I don't even know. I can find stuff for me.
Fairfax Agency has always kinda been in charge of it, so, but I mean...
She has, she has duty lists.
Okay, so that's all, I don't need to worry about it.
Yeah. Unless she didn't do that this year, I haven't really talked to her.
I mean, I can find stuff to do, I mean, there's always stuff, like, I know when Ted did it, we always, we'd take the grass rig down there, and they'd wash out the shelters, you know, and spray them out with the grass rig, scrub them good, and get them all cleaned out.
I think Connie had like areas.
Yeah.
And gave it to the volunteers.
They usually kinda walk around and take certain areas and pick up garbage.
Because we're down two key people, because, you know, Ted, obviously, and then Pat Schreiner's gonna be gone, and he's usually the one that helps with the parks, I just wanted to, we probably need somebody, we probably need somebody kinda there to help get that done.
That's it.
Pat's always been great about doing that with the kids.
Yep.
Because that's where we put the rest of them, you know. We have people come in, and this one takes four, and that one takes five, and then Pat would take 30. So, we wanna make sure we... I figure I'm the one with the big, this year, but I don't, you know, I've never done that part, I've always done something else, so.
Not a problem.
Okay, any else? Thank you. Okay, take one.
I don't really have anything. You guys feel the same way about me, unless anyone has a question. So, we can just talk about it for a minute, an hour and a half?
Okay, please report.
Thanks, Carl.
He's cool over there.
We got it in front of us here.
All right.
Okay, then, moving on, we do have to take care of the, we do have to approve the reservation of Brian Murphy, pardon me, do we not?
Accept it.
So, do I have a motion to accept his reservation?
I'll make a motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Rick, seconded by Josh, to accept Brian Murphy's reservation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Do we have any other correspondence, reports, concerns?
I just asked Marshall to pass these out to everybody. We had a community roundtable discussion today at 4:00 at the community center on some activities for kids that are going on through 4H, and through the Innovation Center, and the Makerspace, and, so you guys are aware of it.
Will this be put in the local papers too?
Yes, I think she's working, she's working a few, and she...
She's got it.
And it's also on the Facebook page, so.
Just an additional comment, she came up to school and set up her golf ring.
Did she?
Two days at school, had pretty good interest, so I think, I think that's a real positive, and hopefully she gets a team or two.
We talked about having maybe an assembly or something at the school, so kids are more aware of it, so, should probably be getting in contact if you want that.
And my suggestion was, you know, the way to do it is to bring it and let it play.
Yeah.
You know, and that's, first day she had a whole bunch, and then she had some repeat customers the second day, and I said, "Those are the ones that wanna work."
Definitely, definitely.
Okay, anything else? Not, I need a motion to adjourn. Second? Okay, second, Rick to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Do just bolt right away.
I second it.
It was a two-in-one.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed? We need to adjourn.